... We're in a board called for meeting, so I don't use the building. Trail one, North State Code, Salado, Texas, March 21st, 2019, 6:30 PM. The agenda? All the way.
All the way.
All the way. Here.
All the way.
Here.
And participating?
Here.
All the way.
Here.
And Blackson?
Here. Through by H. for first. Very special night for you. And we can come together and say thank you to a great group of people. Those who are day and night protecting us, taking care of us, making sure that life continues under peace and order. I'm afraid we can't say thanks enough, but we will try. And for the people that are here, their friends, their family, and all the folks that are here, we give you thanks for them. We're so thankful that they're with us tonight. And as far as state representative Brad Buckley, we're glad that he is here. And Cliff Poole, we're glad that he is here. Lord, we just ask that you give us wisdom tonight, and you give us courage, and may we think what's best. Not what self-centeredly is best for us, but for this village of Salado. We'll put all this in the palm of your hands, because we know that you can handle it. In your name I pray, amen. We're going to stand for a week. We're going to stand a few moments for the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to invite two special guests to come up, please. Abby and him, would you come up? I want to introduce you to my granddaughter. I've seen her for a number of years, and I came down yesterday with my little son Brad, and oh, we're enjoying them, enjoying them. They didn't know I was going to ask them to do it, but I did ask them, they said, "Cuz of allegiance," they said, "Yes," at the school. So Abby and him, would you listen to our pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Maybe she can... Brad? Brad?
Yes.
This is usually the time for citizen comments, and I don't have any. So would you like to address the audience?
I am your state representative Brad Buckley. We are currently in session in Austin, and it's an honor to be here tonight, and we'll get to that when appropriate. But I just want to let you know what an honor it is to represent you in Austin. We are in the, about to begin what's called Budget Night, which will be on 27th. We're working hard on many issues on behalf of citizens of this state, and for me, on behalf of the folks of Central Texas and House District 54, and it's an honor to be there and to serve you. And I tell you what, things tonight is really why I serve, when we get to come here and recognize, you know, truly great heroic first responders. So it's not to be here with you tonight. I know there's a lot of business to go on, but I'll be around. If you guys have any questions about state government or what's happening in Austin, I'll be happy to talk to you at any time. So thank you very much.
Brad, I do have a question, and I probably won't have a chance to do it. Could you say that this is the budget time for the state?
Yes.
Brad, I have my list here.
I've noticed in Austin, there are a lot of lists. But no, it's good. You'll see, nothing's settled yet, but the budget, for the House budget, did pass out of our committee. I was on the appropriations committee. We passed it out on Monday, and also the supplemental bill, so it's about to get real, as they say in Austin. So thanks for letting me be here tonight.
And it is always probably, on this time, between the mayor and the alderman, we'll have the opportunity to say thank you in a real, genuine, humble way. And tonight, we're going to say thank you, and recognize through a proclamation, two people that are truly special. Officer Dungy and Trooper Michael. Would you all come forward, please? And tonight, Frank is going to work with me, and Frank will do one, and I will do one. But before we do that, Mr. City Administrator, do you have a few words that you wanted to say?
More than a few words.
Oh.
But I will tell you, I will try to make them brief, but I think it's important that the general public understands really, truly, why we're here tonight. It's not often we have the ability to do what we're going to be doing tonight and recognize an action and an effort that, quite frankly, is really amazing. And what I want to do is I want to tell you the story about why these two gentlemen, these two young aspiring law enforcement officers are here before the public and before this Board of Alderman. On the night of February the 18th, 2019, approximately 20:55, Officer Christopher Dungy, with the Salado Police Department, was conducting a traffic stop on Southbound IH-35 near exit 285. A bystander pulled over and advised Officer Dungy that a vehicle was driving northbound in the southbound lanes of IH-35 with no lights on. Without hesitation, Officer Dungy notified the Bell County Sheriff's Department of the situation and responded code three to the last known location of that vehicle. During Officer Dungy's response, the dispatcher advised him that the vehicle driving the wrong way on IH-35 had just encountered another vehicle head-on, and there was a vicious collision that had taken place. Officer Dungy was the first officer to arrive on the crash location at exit 286, Southbound IH-35. Moments later, the trooper showed up. Both Officer Dungy and Trooper Michael arrived on location to find the two vehicles with extreme front-end damage, and they were actively on fire, and the occupants were trapped inside. Bystanders on the location stated that both vehicles had been occupied and they couldn't get anybody out. Both Officer Dungy and Trooper Michael assessed the situation and responded quickly without hesitation. Officer Dungy worked to free the occupants while Trooper Michael attempted to put the fire out within the fire extinguisher. Dungy attempted to free the drivers through an F-150 door, but was unable to get out. Officer Dungy utilized his ass to try to break the window in an attempt to pull the individual out. Unfortunately, he was unable to gain access to the vehicle, so he quickly ran around to the passenger side of the vehicle and climbed in the cab of the burning vehicle. The trooper, recognizing what was going on, immediately rushed to assist Officer Dungy. He noticed the fire was spreading in the vehicle that Officer Dungy was in, and he advised the officer what was happening. And both of these officers worked amazingly fast to free this individual and pull this individual to safety. There's no question that these officers are trained to serve, but this is way over and above and beyond. It's probably a situation, and we hope it's a situation, that neither of these officers will ever have to encounter again. But in the eyes of the Villages of Salado and our Police Department's general orders, both Trooper Michael and Officer Dungy are earning of a lifesaving award. And at this time, I'd like to ask the mayor, and our mayor pro tem, to step down front, and Mayor, if you can please present the proclamations.
Trooper Michael, this is a proclamation recognizing Daniel Michael for action taken in saving the life of another. Whereas Daniel Michael is employed as a trooper with the Texas Highway Patrol Division of the Texas Department of Public Safety, and whereas, on the night of February 18th, 2019, while on routine patrol, Trooper Michael responded with Salado Police Officer Christopher Dungy to a head-on collision on Southbound IH-35 involving a vehicle that was traveling the wrong way on the highway. And whereas, upon arriving on the scene, Trooper Michael and Officer Dungy found two vehicles with extreme damage, actively on fire, and the drivers of both vehicles trapped inside the burning vehicles. And whereas, Trooper Michael, without hesitation, immediately attempted to put out the fire with a fire extinguisher. And whereas, recognizing the fire was spreading quickly, Trooper Michael rushed to assist Officer Dungy, who had entered the smoke-filled backseat compartment of one of the vehicles in an attempt to free one of the trapped drivers. And whereas, Trooper Michael worked with Officer Dungy to remove the critically injured driver from the burning vehicle and pull her to safety. And whereas, because of his outstanding judgment and the prompt action exercised by Trooper Michael, the driver was safely transported to Baylor Scott White Hospital in Temple and is now recovering from the serious injuries suffered in the accident. And whereas, Trooper Michael selfishly and without regard to his personal safety, made a split-second decision of a life-and-death nature to perform a purposeful, distinctive, and successful lifesaving act on another human being. Now, therefore be proclaimed by the Village of Salado Board of Alderman this 21st day of March 2019, that the Board of Alderman hereby commends Trooper Daniel Michael for his efforts, and we express our warm appreciation, sincere gratitude for your heroic efforts in saving the life of another.
the life of another. Whereas Christopher Dungy is employed as a police officer with the Village of Salado Police Department. And whereas, on the night of February 18th, 2019, while on routine patrol, Officer Dungy responded with Texas Highway Patrol Trooper Daniel Michaels to a head-on collision on Southbound IH-35 involving a vehicle that was traveling the wrong way on the highway. And whereas, upon arriving on the scene, Officer Dungy and Trooper Michaels found two vehicles with extreme damage, actively on fire, and the drivers of both vehicles trapped inside those burning vehicles. And whereas, after an unsuccessful attempt to assess one of the injured drivers through a driver's side window, Officer Dungy, without hesitation, ran to the passenger side of the vehicle and climbed into the smoke-filled backseat compartment of one of the burning vehicles, and with the assistance of Trooper Michaels, worked to free the trapped and critically injured driver, pulling her to safety. And whereas, because of his outstanding judgment and the prompt action exercised by Officer Dungy, the driver was safely transported to Baylor Scott White Hospital in Temple and is now recovering from the serious injuries suffered in the accident. And whereas, Officer Dungy selfishly and without regard to his own personal safety, made a split-second decision of a life-and-death nature to perform a purposeful, distinctive, and successful lifesaving act on another human being. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Village of Salado Board of Alderman, this 21st day of March 2019, that the Board of Alderman hereby commends Officer Christopher Dungy for his efforts, and express its warm appreciation and sincere gratitude for his heroic actions in saving the life of another. Village of Salado.
Now, I'd like to, one other thing, you don't mind me, two other things. You got to be seated, please, if you got to sit up here, dog, and you can't. No, I want you to just stand back. I'd like for all the viewers to come up, please, and all our police officers to come up, please. We so, we don't get pictures like this very often, and I would like for you to stand Now, it's not over, because I would also like for the spouses of these people and the friends that were invited to be a part of this. Would you come forward and have your picture taken with them? Do y'all not have any friends? Okay, folks, hold on, wait a second. You call Representative Buckley, who's giving Salado $10 million dollars, you are doing it. He is going to give the two officers his pardon.
I tell you, it's always an honor to be in the presence of humble public servants that go about their business every day, doing things that most of us can't imagine. So on an ordinary evening in Salado, all of a sudden, two of our finest did extraordinary things. And for that, I'm humbled and I'm honored to be here this evening. So on behalf of the state of Texas, we've had a Texas flag for each of you flown over the Texas Capitol in honor and recognition of your service and your heroism, and just all the great things that you did that evening. But here's what's even better, they continue to do that every day for us as they move forward, and for that, we are grateful. So I want to present the flags to these two fine gentlemen at this time. Thank you so much for the thing you did that evening. Trooper Michael, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good job. Thank you all.
Mayor, we've got one other quick presentation we'd like to make. This would be Chief Byrne with the Belton Police Department.
I'm so glad you're here. Oh, no problem. I'll maybe quit. I just want to say, I was there that night. My job as a deputy over operations, physically go out to, you know, accidents that are vague. When I arrived on the scene, I didn't think we would be celebrating a lot today. These gentlemen right here are heroes, and I just want to commend them on that, and on behalf of the Belton Police Department, I have to praise for them. I would say, we're probably serving guardians, and that night, they were serving, and they were guardians, and I got to see probably the hands of God. Amazing job, guys.
Chief, it's an honor to have you tonight, and very much for coming over. We're always heart with you guys, and we just really thank you for helping. Well, we've got a lot of business, so if you want to stay in the morning, we'll come by.
How are you?
I'll go down and eat today. Good to see you.
President. Good job. Thank you all.
Mayor, we've got one other quick presentation we'd like to make. This would be Chief Byrne with the Belton Police Department.
I'm so glad you're here. Oh, no problem. I'll maybe quit. I just want to say, I was there that night. My job as a deputy over operations, physically go out to, you know, accidents that are vague. When I arrived on the scene, I didn't think we would be celebrating a lot today. These gentlemen right here are heroes, and I just want to commend them on that, and on behalf of the Belton Police Department, I have to praise for them. I would say, we're probably serving guardians, and that night, they were serving, and they were guardians, and I got to see probably the hands of God. Amazing job, guys.
Chief, it's an honor to have you tonight, and very much for coming over. We're always heart with you guys, and we just really thank you for helping. Well, we've got a lot of business, so if you want to stay in the morning, we'll come by.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Number one, on front page, the consent agenda. A, approval of amendments of greater board of all new meetings of March 7th, 2019. B, approval of February 2019 financial statements for the Village of Salado. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll be bringing the amendments, please.
It's your second. Questions being made, secondary discussion. Question asked, in poll, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Puzzled, like, passed.
Mayor, you also need a motion on the financial.
I'll need a motion on the financial statements for the Village of Salado, please.
As we said, the financial statement is presented.
It's your second. Questions being made, secondary discussion. Question asked, in poll, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Puzzled, like, passed. Attorney Administrator, report.
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of the board, members of the public, let me run through a few items. First of all, status report on the wastewater project. The end is near as far as construction, in fact, is here, not just near. Construction on the collection system and the treatment plant is complete. We're waiting on a couple of hoses, solicitations. Other than that, our target date for turning the waste system on is April the 2nd. Jacob CH, St. Hill, our contract operators, were in town this week and did a rather thorough walkthrough of the system itself, spent three or four hours in the treatment plant, and they're very comfortable with the facilities and, quite frankly, excited. They feel like it's Christmas morning. They don't often get to come in and start operating a brand-new wastewater system, but this is their lucky time, I guess. The third informational meeting for the initial customers on the wastewater system was held this past Monday evening. It was a good meeting. We began sharing the impact fee data with residents, continuing to answer questions. Training was held today for plumbers who will be installing grinder pumps. As you know, the folks on the east side of Main Street will be getting grinder pumps. Everybody else will be gravity-connected to the system. The grinder pumps that we purchased with your authorization require the plumbers to go through a certification course so they don't board the warranty when they install it. So we had a briefing today and had a rather good turnout, had close to a dozen plumbers show up, electricians, so it went very well from that standpoint. We, meanwhile, are continuing the process of sharing data, impact fee data, with customers and answering their questions regarding the connection process, as something we'll be doing, I'm sure, for several weeks to come, as the folks begin to connect to this wastewater system. Status report on sales tax collections. The March 2019 sales tax check arrived, the city all along time, and it represents January sales. It totaled some $35,747. It was 15% higher than the March 2019 check. That's the largest March check we've had in the Village's history. Fiscal year-to-date, sales tax collections totaled some $262,488. That's up about 10 and 1/2%, almost 11% from the same period last year. And fiscal year-to-date, sales tax collections represent 64% of the FY 2019 sales tax revenue budget, 50% mark in fiscal year, so we're running ahead. That's also the case as far as our mixed beverage tax collection. So you know, the fourth quarter of 2018, mixed beverage tax check arrived. It represents October, November, and December sales. It totaled some $6,700 for our difference as far as the amount of check versus the sales tax. The fourth quarter check for 2018 was 91% higher than the fourth quarter for 2017. The fourth quarter 2018 check, the largest fourth quarter check in the Village's history. Fiscal year-to-date, mixed beverage tax collections totaled just over $10,700. That's up about 20% from the same period last year. And fiscal year-to-date, the sales tax, that section should be, mixed beverage tax collections represent about 60% of the FY 2019 mixed beverage tax budget at the 50% mark in the year. So things are looking good as far as our state sales tax and state beverage tax requirements are panning out. Status report on the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed amendments on Tuesday, March 12th. The commission is expected to take action on the proposed amendments on Tuesday, March 26th. The Board of Alderman will then get invited to the apple. They will hold a
...visiting tonight and explain the entire system to every historical group in Solado, and then I'll expand on to others, you know, region, different regions. It is designed to be a historic depository of history of Texas. And, you know, there are many, many foreign visitors to the United States that want to come to Texas to see a real capital. You know, it is a great deal. But it is, it's mainly educational historical information.
Troy, thank you very much.
Happy. Well, thank you.
(applause).
(inaudible) before his name and address. He's written a message.
Kathy Sands, 2300 Indian Trail. On behalf of the Solado Cultural Arts District Board, I would like to say we are proud to be behind this fabulous effort of Troy Kelly's idea. We as a board will be happy to work in any way possible for this ongoing project. The Solado Cultural Arts District became a reality in 2016 as Jill Shipman began to prod, for the years earlier with the state, she worked on this for many years and we finally got to 2016, the designation. We call it SCAD, Solado Cultural Arts District. Board consists of representatives from Keep Solado Beautiful, Solado Historical Society, The Village Artist, Local Artist, and PALS, Public Arts League. More organizations will be on board very soon. The Cultural Arts District supports music, art, architecture, history, and education in Solado. Again, we are very supportive of the project and are willing to go to work. Thank you.
(applause). (inaudible) I had done, this is backed up, this is vision, this is vision. I don't know how creatively he was able to put all this together, but Troy, this is backed up.
Right.
It truly is. And thank you very much for the presentation that you have made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are more than yours. Number four, public hearing and possible action. A, hold public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance to the village of Solado approving an application for a conditional use permit for a golf course on property zoned, single family residential SF7 located at 1610 Club Circle, more specifically known as the Mill Creek Golf Club in Soladoville, Antieto, and providing for the followings of irrelevability, effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Don?
Yes, sir, Mayor members of board, members of the public. This is a public hearing and action item for the board is a zoning case. As you mentioned, it relates to the Mill Creek Golf Club. The golf club has been in existence for more than 30 years. Currently, the subject property is owned, single family residential district, or SF7. Golf courses are permitted in the SF7 zoning district as a conditional use, which requires a cut from the village. Records show no cut or conditional use permit has ever been granted to the Mill Creek Golf Club. In an effort to bring the subject property into compliance with the zoning ordinance, the owners of the Mill Creek Golf Club have filed an application for CUP, a cut, whatever you want to call it. A cup is a zoning exception, which allows the property owner to use his land in a way not otherwise permitted within the particular zoning district. Once granted, a CUP, a conditional use permit stays with the property, even if the property is sold, only the property owner and the village have the ability to remove a CUP once it's granted. Without a cut, this is important to understand, the Mill Creek Golf Club is considered a pre-existing non-conforming use, which means it can continue to operate, but it has to operate only in the branders, only within the batteries, only within the picture that it's in today. Any type of effort to change the operation, expand, reduce the operation in any way requires them to, number one, either come into compliance with the zoning ordinance and go get the CUP, or get their property zoned, private recreation, one of the two, because private recreation is the only other way to have a golf course in town. Or they have to shut it down if they choose to do so. There's no intent and no desire on anybody's part to shut the golf course down. They have no desire to shut the golf course down. They have a desire to bring the golf course into conformance and to compliance with the zoning code, and that's what this is all about. Granting the requested cup will not impact the property owner's ability to construct single-family homes on the property at some point in the future, as the property is owned, single-family residential. So keep in mind, the property will remain zoned, we're not changing the base zoning with this action. It remains zoned for single-family residential, so at some point in the future, there's a desire on the owners to build homes on that property. They'll go through the subdivision process and meet building codes and build whatever homes they want to try to do. But what it does is, it basically gives them the ability to hold off from doing that from time being and continue to use the property as they have used it historically for some 30 years, and they just operate as a golf course. With the cup, they'll have the ability to expand, they'll have the ability to reduce if they want that operation, but it basically brings it into conformance. Notice that this particular request was published in the local newspaper, and property owners within 200 feet of the subject property were notified. To date, a significant number of responses have been received, the majority of which, a significant majority of which, have been in favor of this conditional use permit designation. The Planted Zoning Commission held a public hearing and made a recommendation on this particular case earlier this week, and that recommendation was unanimous, that the board consider approving this conditional use permit request. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you at a public hearing.
Questions to Don, please? No, this is not a public hearing, this is probably all, questions to Don, please?
Don, has our legal counsel reviewed this and looked at it to make sure it's all within our authorities and it's, we're all covered on all aspects of this action?
Right. The thing to understand, one is that, in response, to expound just a bit, a conditional use permit is really prescribed by its title. It is a permit that you can place conditions on, and basically, it's intended to allow for a use that normally would not be allowed except for in certain situations, hence the reason, certain conditions. In this particular situation, the applicant has submitted an application requesting no special conditions. The Planted Zoning Commission and this board has the ability to attach any conditions they want to attach to the conditional use permit, should they choose to move forward and approve this. The P&amp;Z chose not to attach any conditions, they chose to let it stand on its own merits, and that was just a liberal, as the golf courses have asked for to be done. Staff's not recommending any conditions be attached to it, it's really rather a straightforward zoning case.
This request was brought forward from the golf course ownership, it wasn't developed within the board or any of our staff?
No. They stay after submit the application.
Other questions to Don, please? If you've never been to a public hearing, this is how it works. I will come out of this session and go into a public hearing session, and then from that, you will have the opportunity to walk up to the microphone. You have three minutes and speak either for or against, or whatever you want to say. At the end of three minutes, Mike will call it, and that will be that. I will call three times, and you will hear me do something like this. First call. I'll call like this, no one comes, second call, and the third call. At the end of the third call, we'll come out of the public hearing and we'll go right into our session that we're in right now. So. Come out of the session that we are in right now. The time is 7:19, and we're going into the public hearing. First call. Coming out of the public hearing, the time is 7:20. Going into the regular board log. Before these gentlemen can discuss this, there has to be a motion on the floor. Solid, entertain a motion, please.
I move we approve this conditional use permit for the Mill Creek Golf Club.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, discussion. Right here, the call for the question. Question has been called on, raise your hand, please. Oppose likewise passes. The second one, D, and the number four, hold public hearing and consider approval of amendments to the village of Solado comprehensive plan. Don?
Yes, sir, this particular item, as you know, we discussed in the administrative report, hinges on a recommendation from the P&amp;Z. As the P&amp;Z has delayed their decision until next week, we'd ask that you take action tonight, defer consideration to this item until the April 4th meeting, and at that meeting, you will hold a public hearing and consider final action on the amendments.
So, from your end, for April?
Yeah, you need a motion to approve.
Okay. There between the motion, please?
Sir, may I move to postpone this item to the April 4th meeting?
Your second?
Second.
Discussion?
Question.
Question has been called, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Oppose likewise passes. Number five, we're going into the ordinance. Consider approval of the first reading of an ordinance of the village of Solado, Texas. Establishing rates for wastewater service to be charged in the village of Solado. Amending ordinance number 20015, period, 12. Establishing policies for operating a village-owned wastewater treatment plant and collection system, including establishing wastewater service rates, connection fees, deposit fees, interest penalties, reconnection charges, transfer fees, and return check fees. Adopting general policies and procedures, including application, implementation, billing and collection of established fees. Providing for irrelevability, repealing conflicting ordinances, and providing for findings of fact, an effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Don?
Yes, sir, Mayor members of the board, this is the ordinance that we discussed at our meeting last week, in which you approved the raise and directed us to prepare an ordinance to put these rates in effect. The ordinance is to be approved on two readings. It's a rather comprehensive ordinance, a little bit of history on this, as you know, several months back, the village engaged the services of a rate consultant, and that rate consultant worked with the city and did an impact fee study that basically produced an impact fee, which the board adopted, and we're now levying. At the same time, the consultant was tasked with doing a rate study to determine what the service rates would be, the monthly service rates would be for this wastewater system. There was a preliminary report on that rate presented several months ago, and the decision was made at that time to wait until we got closer to turning the system on, where we had a better idea as far as whether there were going to be any surprise costs out there that we needed to contemplate rolling into the rates. Because the discussion has been all along that the rates would basically cover the operating costs of the plant and not the capital cost, the impact fees, the tax rate would handle the debt load from a standpoint of the cost of constructing the system. So that's what you've done. We had our workshop, you presented this, you'll have the first reading tonight, we'll have a special meeting next week to approve the second reading of this ordinance, and then it will be in effect. A couple of notes, it sets out the rates we talked about, the levels we talked about at the last meetings for the individual identification, and that is the fact that there will basically be three types of customer classes. There'll be a residential customer class, and then there will be two commercial customer classes. One will be a non-residential, low-impact class, and that's typically going to be the small retail shops. The individuals who have a restroom here or there. And then there'll be a high-impact, non-residential customer class, which will more than likely encompass the other customers, which means restaurants, hotels, you know, any type of breweries, any type of wineries, any type of businesses that would generate a waste stream that would be beyond just almost a nominal waste stream. It doesn't have anything to do with the volume of water used, it purely has to do with the strength of their wastewater, and the idea is this, that high-impact rate class will pay a little bit more than the low-impact rate class, because quite frankly, they're going to be taxing or burdening the system more as far as their waste stream goes, or going to be having to spend more to treat that particular waste. So it sets out those customer classes and sets out the fees for those. Every customer, whether they're a non-residential customer, or whether they're a residential customer, will pay a monthly service bill, and that bill will be broken into two pieces. One piece is a base fee, and that's a fixed base fee that all customers will pay the same fixed base fee in their customer class. We talked about that, I'll throw this up on the board. As far as the residential customers go, their base fee would be $20. For the non-residential, low-impact, their base fee would be $40, and for the high-impact, their base fee would be $60. The second part of the bill is what's called a volumetric portion of the bill, and it's a bill that's going to be basically a fee that will vary customer to customer depending on their water use. In the case of residential customers, we will calculate their average monthly water use over the winter months, and then we will set their bill for a 12-month period based on that use. The factor for determining the volumetric will be when we get that average monthly use during the winter period, we'll multiply $8 per every thousand gallons of that monthly average as it comes out. And then you'll add that total to the wastewater base fee, and then you'll have the total bill. In the case of non-residential, it's calculated a little bit different. It'll have a base fee, in the case of low-impact, we mentioned 40, in the case of high-impact, 60, but in the volumetric fee is where you'll see a bit of a difference. Low-impact will be $11 per thousand, and high-impact will be $16 per thousand. The difference in the way the bill is calculated between residential and non-residential is, the residential will be based on winter months. And if you think about it, that makes sense, because you're trying to capture as much of the wastewater as possible. In the winter months, people typically don't irrigate during the winter months, so you more have to catch truly what's inside the house and going down the drain, as opposed to trying to calculate that rate off the summer water use bill. For resident, for non-residential, you, it's very difficult to capture a winter rate, because quite frankly, they use water year-round, if their businesses are prospering and they're functioning well. So what we do is, in the case of the winter rates, we determine their, we calculate their volumetric fee based on their average monthly water use over a 12-month period. We'll calculate that, we'll multiply $11 by 1,000, or 16 by 1,000, fix their bill for a 12-month period, and come back in and recalculate. Everybody's bill will get recalculated once a year, based on those criteria I just mentioned a minute ago. So you'll know going in to that year what your bill's going to be monthly for the next 12 months, and then, of course, we will notify you when we make that alteration on the bill. So this particular ordinance sets forth that, that particular parameter and the criteria for the rates. It also sets out some of the standard things, such as what happens to be a bad check, it sets out credit card fees, you know, those typical things you put when you start levying fees and dealing with that. It talks about impact fees, and I think probably obnote the thing to point out in impact fees, is there are some customers in this community that are not on the Solado Water Spike Corporation. So when they come in, they want to know how they are going to be charged an impact fee. We have a chart in here, an OUE chart, which is kind of a standard chart for use for their type of land use, and what we do is, based on their type of land use, we'll use what is considered to be a standard OUE calculation to determine their impact fees, since we don't have any true water use. This village is not going to place a meter on our private water well. That is not our business, or a commercial water well, that is not our business. So we have, though, to have some way to calculate a bill for somebody who's off water and using wastewater. So that's how we'll do that, from that perspective. Also, we're noting is the fact that we've included a provision in here, as we've learned as we've started to go through the process of levying these impact fees, there are certain circumstances where the calculation may come in somewhat inflated because of unusual circumstances, be it a, an unknown significant water leak, you know, that when we sat and did the annotation, looked at the charts, we simply grabbed data from the Water Spike Corporation, and if the customer says, wait a minute, I had a water leak during these three, two months, and if we can validate that, and we have some documentation to prove that, then we have the ability to go in and level out that impact fee to make it more realistic and more consistent what the water use would be. And it also allows, in situations where there's some type of extremely unusual amount of water that's being used, non-domestic water use that's being used on a particular piece of property. But we feel that authority needs to be given, instead of bringing every person up here who may have an issue, all 130 customers, and burning the board with that, but also dragging the process on, and dragging the customers through a bureaucratic process, trying to minimize that if at all possible. It sets out a situation as far as, what happens if somebody doesn't pay their wastewater bill? We have ordinances on the books right now, and we've chosen to be consistent with those ordinances. We have an item later in the agenda, on the addendum, to talk about possibly an arrangement with the Water Spike Corporation, which a lot of cities do, low cities do, quite frankly, they have arrangements to the point where if somebody doesn't pay their wastewater bill, the way you normally deal with those situations is, you go in and you basically disconnect the water service in that situation. We don't have an agreement with the Water Spike Corporation right now with that, but we put language in here that if we did, that would be one option, dealing with an individual who doesn't pay their bill, but the first event, first option, and the given option is the fact that we would shut down their wastewater service, and we would take civil action to try to recover the fees that are owed. It's very likely that you end up in court, and the court's going to order that the water be shut off, one way or the other, knowing the situation as it exists, so. But that said, we have provisions in there relating to that, so we shut off water service, we go take civil action to recover fees, and if at some point in the future, there's some type of agreement with the Water Spike Corporation, then that potentially plays in as another option, another idea, an alternative from my standpoint. So it really is rather straightforward, no surprises in it. It is, it does not commit to length of terms of these rates, that is a policy decision that this board does, you would not typically put that in an ordinance. It says that the board has the ability to look at these rates, you know, as they see fit, when they see fit. There was discussion, as you know, in our rate study, we presented a long-term projection on the rates, and our consultant presented a three-year freeze on the rates once they're adopted, and y'all talked about maybe taking it to two years, and then there was discussion about having the flexibility to do it at any given time. And I think it's going to be important as we get into this system, that, you know, there are bumps in this road, and I think it's important to understand that we just need to stay on top of it, analyze it, and recognize where we're short, recognize where we're strong, and try to make sure we balance the equation over the next 12, 24 months, because it's a brand-new system, and these are issues that brand-new systems go through on a regular basis. So Mayors, before you tonight for consideration for first reading.
Questions to Don, please?
I read this, and one, some of the questions that I have is like, on page seven, B2, the as-built drawings.
Yes.
Exactly what kind of format do you think that you would be expecting to get from your customer?
A legible drawing from the plumber is all we're asking.
And then on, the application fee is on page number eight, and that's really going to apply to people outside of the first 103 customers?
Yeah, we delineated or differentiated, if you will, in this ordinance, the provisions that you have adopted, and that is the fact that we're not going to charge permit fees for the initial customer base, we're not going to charge contractor registration fees for the customer base, and we try to reflect those, we're not going to charge an application fee, you know, for the initial customer base in this situation. And then we've set out, after that initial customer base, the fees that would be in place for those individuals and the procedures.
Okay, and then in D, in the security deposit, they will have to provide a $100 security deposit?
Right. That's kind of standard. We chose to keep that fee low, as you look at other security deposits across the table, commercial security deposits can be very high, and we felt like it was not there.
Okay.
If we have to alter that in the future, we'll come back to it.
In paragraph F, you have a reservation fee, so if a builder or an owner comes in and wants to reserve a hookup, they pay $750. Is that, is that, is that applied across the board for a small user and a heavy user, or is it?
It's a provision that we need to strengthen language in here to make sure that this is in the initial customer area, the initial service area is what we intend this to be. And the thought process in this is the fact that somebody may have a lot, that they don't know what's going to go on that right now, but they want to basically buy in, and they want to have the ability to buy in as one of the original customers, since they're in that initial identified services, that we would, we would charge this $750 fee for that vacant piece of property, and if and when they come in to develop that property, whatever that impact fee is at that time, we would simply deduct that $750 from that piece. We're not going to extend the, you know, the impact fee right now is $37.50. If you choose to change that impact fee after 91 days to $5,000, they're going to be on the hook for the $5,000. I mean, it's not going to change, it's not going to impact how much they're going to pay on their impact fee. That $750 would go towards whatever their impact fee is to reduce the total amount they have to pay at that fee.
So that's sort of the buy-in to the existing parameters that we've set up in the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the credit card fee, $3 per $100?
We charge that right now, on all credit card fees in this report, the building permits, it's just we want to stay.
Okay, Don, I think it's, it'll fly as written with those questions asked, answered. Thank you.
Other questions to Don, please?
Now, if someone asks to reserve this at the $700 plus fee, how long can they ask for that to be reserved for?
This ordinance does not place a time limit on that. You know, we can, we can go in and place that based on y'all's thoughts. You know, our feeling is that the issue is going to be that they want at least to be able to say they've got it, they're in that service area, and we've committed to serve that initial service area. So it could be for 12 months, it could be for 24 months. If you'd like to place a time limit on it, that's not a bad idea to do. We left that one open for you.
And if they sell that property, do they?
That reservation would go with it?
It'd go with the property?
Yes, sir.
Not with the personally paid?
Right.
Go with the property, okay. Thanks.
I mean, I think that makes sense, is there? But I think the idea of a time limit on how long you want that reservation to exist is not a bad idea.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions to Don, please? Don, you looking for a motion to approve this second preserving? I'm going to give you an opportunity to do something. This is not the floor to get in an argument about this, or to take a position our side. This is, I'm going to give you the opportunity to ask Don a question that you've been wondering about. So at this time, briefly, I'll open up the floor, the dancers. If you have a question that you would like to ask, please ask it right now to Don. Just raise your hand. Great.
Are you going to allow irrigation meters on commercial properties to be not included in their total wastewater calculation?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. And one of the things we've done, it's a good question, Gray, and one of the things we've done is, and we've encountered in this levying process, some people who've had some significant water uses that they've been able to show us, and they can tie back the irrigation. And again, the whole concept is to gauge that fee on your wastewater use as opposed to irrigation use, which is not considered wastewater. So we asked for documentation. One of the things we've told folks, and I think when it comes to rates in the future, it's just as big an issue as opposed to the impact fee calculation. We've said to avoid, you need to be sensitive to your water use from this day on, and the question was, well, how do we separate our irrigation use? There are two ways to separate your irrigation from your total water use that we're going to evaluate once a year. One way is you can go to the Water Spike Corporation and ask them to install an irrigation meter, and pay for a separate irrigation bill as opposed to one combined bill that you may be doing now. The thing you need to be careful with in that, and I would challenge you to be very careful in this, is you're going to find out, depending on the size of the line that you have on your property, that meter can be very expensive. So the question is, what's the alternative for that, if it comes in that's going to be a couple thousand dollars? The alternative is getting your plumber to install an inline meter at the point where your water goes into your irrigation system. We've already worked with one customer to do that, and what will happen is, that customer will meter monthly, they'll read it monthly, we will actually even go read it monthly for them, that's not a problem if they'd like us to do that, but on an annual basis, we will get a report on that property that shows the total amount of irrigation water used on that property based on that meter, and again, we're going to have the ability to verify that. And then what we'll do is, we'll take that irrigation amount and subtract that from the total water bill, where it would get from the water company every year, so you don't have to go and spend $10,000 or $7,000 on a water meter. So that's, that's the way you deal with that. One thing I'd also point out real quickly about this is, on the industrial, well, I'd say the industrial, on the, the high-impact customers, the non-residential high-impact customers, it's important to understand that every one of those customers on there has an obligation to meet our body requirements, and our basically spring flow quality requirements for wastewater that have been in place for some time. So if you were exempt in the past, you're not exempt anymore, because you're new on a brand-new system with a brand-new treatment plan. So that means free strats, that means they have to meet certain treatment limits and those type of things. So we haven't changed that, that's been in place, we just have rolled that in this ordinance to reemphasize the requirement that they have to meet.
Any other questions, please?
Yes, ma'am. Have y'all thought about any other properties that could be offered in the sewer that are new on, like off of Dryden Street?
Yes, ma'am, we have, and we've actually had discussions with a couple of folks off of Royal Street, open on the paintings, about the idea of... off of Royal Street, open onto Paines, about the idea of that, and, and they have, they have asked, and, and normally when we tell them that they're going to be responsible for paying for the cost of the extension, unless they're right next to the line, and they're able to work out an arrangement with the property that has it, and they're able to just get an easement set up, normally the cost of that ends up being a little bit more, at least the discussions we've had up to this point, than they're willing to pay. Because any extension on this wastewater system is going to be the obligation of the person requesting service. For example, later in this agenda, we're going to be talking about going to, beginning the design process out of Royal Street, the subdivision that was approved the other day. The school district is paying for its extension down in Williamson, Salado School Road. So, anybody who extends has to pay because it's not fair to put that burden on the current customer base or the taxpayers of the city.
Final call for questions, which will be the last question, will be on my, yes, ma'am?
Me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of questions. Don, one, one of our largest users of, of probably sewage and, and largest producers of sales tax in town is Brookshires. Has that agreement been nailed down as far as connecting to Brookshires?
Not at this time.
So, nothing?
Not at this time.
Okay, and my second question?
Very big talks.
Yeah, so, nothing. Okay, so, the second question is, I've been in real estate for many, many years, and I've never agreed to pay anything for a piece of property, we haven't, anything for a piece of property or a, or building or a house or anything, until we have a contract. Can you tell me when we will be receiving?
Your question is, please, what is your question?
The question is, when will we be receiving the service agreement so that we can look over the terms?
Our service agreement will actually come out tomorrow afternoon, and it'll be available in addition to the payment plan agreement for the impact fees as people are starting to come in. I understand it's a service agreement, it is an agreement to serve. Basically, you pay the bill, we agree to serve, and we agree to ensure service provided the bill is paid. It's a very simple document, it's not a significant fifteen, sixteen-page contract, it's a two-phase agreement. So, that'll be, that'll be available at the end of the day tomorrow, that's our plan.
Okay. Last standing questions, we'll have a second reading of this next week, and all of them in the floor again if you guys have questions. I'm going to take a motion now on the approval of first reading of an ordinance, those villages of Salado.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass on first reading in ordinance amending ordinance number 2015. Got twelve, we're going to wastewater treaty.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Don, on the, well, the only, the only thing that I really have not been able to nail down is that there's not an official disputes process for anybody that wants to come in and say, water bills too high, but that's all being handled through the staff, is what I understand. So...
Well, there's, when, when it comes to billings, there's really not disputes. It, it's, it's a fixed bill that's going to be calculated on the water use, and if there's an issue that comes up where they say, we had a major water leak during that time, they can come to us and they can present the documentation to us, and we can certainly work through that issue at the time we calculate that fee. But you really wouldn't set a situation up to the point where you would have appeals because the rates, what it is, it's based on a hard water use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Now, the argument that the rates are too high comes down to a rate issue, and that is something they have the ability to appeal to you on every day.
Any other discussion concerning this ordinance? Do I have the call for a question?
Question.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise? Passes. Number six, discussion and possible action. A, discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed concept plan for an approximately seventy-two point seventy-four acres, two-phase residential subdivision, to be located in the seven hundred block of Farm to Market Road, twenty-two sixty-eight, in the ETJ of the Village of Salado. Don?
Yes, sir, mayor members of the board, this is a concept plan for a subdivision. The subdivision itself is proposed to be in the seven hundred block of FM twenty-two sixty-eight, it's in the Village of ETJ. If you're familiar with that particular area, it is basically on the south side of FM twenty-two sixty-eight, behind where the wildfire was, I think it was referred to by, by many of those areas, Pipes Property. And the developers in this situation, the Brothers Group, have submitted a concept plan for an approximately seventy-two acre, two-phase residential subdivision. The lots in the subdivision will be at least one-half acre in size, the subdivision will be served by private septic systems and also by the Salado Water Supply Corporation. The concept plan calls for the development of some seventy single-family residential lots. Phase one will consist of fifty-three lots with an average lot size of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty feet. Phase two will consist of seventeen lots with an average lot size of twenty-nine thousand and ninety-eight square feet. There will be three access points to the subdivision, one off the Interstate thirty-five frontage road, the other off FM twenty-two sixty-eight, and the other on Guest Road. Currently, the subdivision, as I mentioned, is located in the ETJ. The applicant has indicated that in the future, a portion of the subdivision may be annexed into the village, and if and when that does occur, it'll more likely occur when central wastewater service is available to them. At this stage of the game, it's not available to them, and they're going to try to continue to make it available to them, hopefully in the future they want it. But at this point, until they get it, they want to stay outside the city, hence the reason they have submitted a, a concept plan with half-acre lots, which is their subdivision. Village engineer has reviewed the concept plan and has found it to be compliant with all requirements of the Village of Salado subdivision ordinance. The planning and zoning commission on the twelfth of this month reviewed the concept plan and afterwards voted unanimously to recommend approval of the plan. The applicant's representative is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. It really is a rather straightforward subdivision. They will plan, just so you know, also in addition to the idea of annexing in once they're able to get wastewater service, they will have a note indicating that they would, they would be interested in potentially dedicating some park land in the subdivision if and when they're annexing to the village, which is good.
Questions to Don, please. Developer here?
The applicant's representative is here, yes, sir.
I'd like to give you his name, please.
Yes, sir.
I'd love to give.
Justin Fuller, Clark and Fuller, Pennsylvania, two fifteen North Main Street, Temple, Texas. The developer is Brothers Home Builders, and they are looking at developing this piece of land, start on phase one, be fifty-three lots, half-acre in size, and then moving on to phase two at a later point in the, the process. It is going to be right behind and next to the possible sanctuary development, and we have been in discussion with sanctuary developers, and they're looking to bring the sewer to the area possibly. So, at that point, we may be, have the opportunity to tie in the sewer, and, and so we may change up the lot sizes at that point if we can, but right now we're looking at half-acre lots. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Understand if and when that time comes that they decide they want to try to change the lot size, they would have to come back in and amend the concept plan before you.
Correct, correct. Right now, it is all laid out for half-acre lots.
Which is compliant with our code.
Sir, take this, this is going to be subject.
Correct.
Questions, please.
So, when will construction start out there, are you expecting?
As soon as we get the construction plans completed and the construction plans turned into review, we're in the design process right now. So, I would estimate probably within another month or so, we'll be submitting construction plans.
Okay, depending on when, depending on when you begin, approximate date of, when would, when would you estimate you finish?
I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I don't know how long it takes to fully construct it.
You don't know how long it would take to construct, was you having a concept plan? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. It depends on the, when they start the construction and how much is needed completed. You know, maybe three months, maybe four months, five months, six months, I'm not very, for them to have the, the subdivision completed. Are you talking about the construction, the completed construction of the subdivision?
Yeah. How long does it take to build a house?
I'm not a house builder, I'm a civil engineer. I don't know.
Do you know how, do you have an idea how long it takes to build a house?
I would assume it takes five.
Takes six years or three months?
I would say five to six months.
Six months?
Yeah, for the house. But you're looking at probably, you know, two or three or four months to, to put the roads and, and water lines in.
That's, that's what I want to know, you know, give us an idea of what it would take to, to complete the project.
Six months to a year before your, your house is?
Six months to a year, okay.
Do you know how many square feet your house is?
I have absolutely nothing. Unfortunately, the developer had a prior engagement today, he was at the PNC meeting, but he was not able to make it today.
Have you been to discussion with sanctuary?
Yes, we have been talking sanctuary.
And how would they feel about this?
They have no issues with it.
Other questions, please?
Don, was this looked at in terms of future transportation as well?
Yes, it was. It was indeed.
Thought of giving the connecting through this to oil any one time?
There was, there was discussion, the, the thoroughfare plane calls for a road that doesn't make a lot of sense that goes through that subdivision right now, they was talking about flipping that road. It works, I mean, from my standpoint, the guest, the, the exit and the guests is, is interesting because that's, that's a very small neighborhood street, and the other two, though, should, should actively address that issue.
I don't think in terms of the future, trying to get less traffic coming all the way into town or oil, there's no way to get this, I know it's a ways away, but it's, still I'm thinking down the line, when we get two or three more subdivisions on the oil, of allowing some of that traffic to get through to twenty-two sixty-eight.
Right, right.
So, without having to go all the way to Blackberry, so, that, that's just my thought process on this one.
I'm talking with sanctuary, who is your contact person with sanctuary?
Uh, we've been talking with their engineers, um, I believe it's Pete Dawson. And I've all, we've all had one or two conversations, well, the, the developer has had more conversations with them than I have.
Okay, all right, thanks.
One of the things that they've talked a little bit about with the subdivision, that at least what we gleaned from our discussions and looking at the concept plan, is the airports out there, and, and there has been some, there's been some discussion about how it interfaces with the airport. On your drawing, you can see one layer of that axis at the end of the runway, and I think they've had discussions, not just with sanctuary, but they've had discussions with the airport owners about how, how they might be able to work in partnership with them from that standpoint. They bought, in fact, a piece of property to gain their required exits, they bought that piece of property that the airport was looking to buy from the end of the runway. So, I, I think there's some discussions that are taking place between them, you know, try to see if there's some opportunities. So, there's a road flip from the transportation plan standpoint, and then there's also looking at the idea of some type of partnership, not just with sanctuary, but with the airport. The partnership with sanctuary is going to end up being wastewater-related. From what the developers indicated to us is they're not, sanctuary is not willing to work with them at this stage of the game.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, please?
The other question I was going to ask, Mike, when you said, how long does it take to build a house, my response would have been, are you married or not married?
Hey, wouldn't make a difference. That would be a great question for someone.
I have one more question.
Sir?
Your civil engineer, so I think you might know the answer.
All right.
If you were the developer, and you're putting septic tanks down, they're not, they're not cheap, that means coming into the village is not really a reality because nobody would do that.
Right.
How would you feel about that?
How would I feel about that as the developer? Um, I mean, what's the benefit for the developer coming into the city without having sewer service, but, um, that's going to...
That's okay. You know, I, I put you on the spot, I apologize, Justin, but, uh, thank you very much for your comments. You're welcome. Before we can discuss this, we need to have a motion, please, in a second.
A motion that we accept the, approve the concept plan as presented?
Yeah. Sir, second. Motion made and seconded, discussion now. Question has been called, all in favor, raise your hand, please, opposed likewise? Passes. B, discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed policy relating to the wastewater system connection equipment for customers who have recently acquired a new septic system. Don?
Yes, sir, mayor members of the board, as you know, we had a brief discussion about this as a workshop item, a beating or two back. Uh, we've done some additional research in this, this is an item that we would want to build into our impact ordinance, because again, what we're talking about is the concept of this, that is, if someone has just purchased a septic system in the last year or two, and now they're being required to tie on to the city sewer system, how fair is that to that customer who just brought fifteen or twenty thousand dollars on a brand-new septic system, put a little plug on it when it hadn't even really seen its light? The big question when you contemplate this policy is, what truly is the return rate on the septic system? At what point have you gotten your money out of what you put into that septic system? Uh, and, and it really is, it is a very subjective guess from that standpoint. How many properties are we talking about in this situation? And, and what truly are we talking about? What we're talking about is the idea of, do we want to give and offer a grace period, if you will, to those individuals who just bought a brand-new septic system? They would still not escape the mandatory requirement to connect to the wastewater system, but there would be a deferral period to the point that you would give them enough time to get back their investment on that septic system before they have to tie into it. It may be something you don't even want to offer. I mean, and, and we, we've gone back, we've looked at, uh, we've looked at septic records in the service area, we've actually examined septic system permits from the county from throughout Salado, not just an area, but specifically targeting this area, and there have only been thirteen permits that have been issued in the service area in the last ten years. And, and of those, probably, majority of those are, you know, are at least, you know, eight years old. So, you know, you're, you're dealing with a, a small number of, of those. We've had one that, that is, that is really pretty concurrent, we've got one that's like three years old, and that one in my mind makes a lot of sense if you want to go that route and want to offer that policy. We've got one that's, that's five years old, then we jump to six, and then the numbers start climbing in, in greater number, or they go out. What would happen would be, you would probably have them put down a reservation fee as far as their impact fee goes, and then you would, you know, let them live out that lifetime that you determined for a septic system. So, if, if you determine the lifetime is five years for that return investment, and if they've got a system that's already three years old, they have two years more on that septic system before they'd have to connect. You know, and, and you can just work the, work the scenarios from there. What I need from y'all tonight is, number one, are you still interested in that idea now that you see numbers and, and what we're talking about, number one, but number two, what is your determination? How, how, how long do you think, in your mind, that it is a reasonable time period to recruit your investment in the septic system before you're required to abandon and connect?
Questions to Don, please?
And what we'll do is if you decide that, if you decide it's something you want to do, we'll draft the amendment and put it on next week's, again, put it in the ordinance as opposed to a straight policy.
On that septic, speaking of septic system question, I don't have a clue. I don't, I don't have a clue on the question, but...
It really is a shot-in-the-dark question.
Yeah, but there are people that do have a clue, don't they? I mean, we can consult with them.
You know, it, it, there's a varied opinion, it's varied opinion. I, I've heard everywhere from five to eight to ten years. A lot of it depends on the system you put in, on the type of system you put in, which is going to determine what, what the, what the, you know, what the real value is as far as your return on the investment. You know, do we want to get into a situation of analyzing each and every one of those guys? I clearly think if somebody has just bought a system in the last three years or something like that, that to me is, is one that's maybe deserving some consideration, but if you start getting to the four, five, six, seven, eight years out, depends on the system.
Tom, would you be willing to give us time to think about this in this workshop?
This is a cable workshop, it's a cable workshop, we've already talked about it.
I think we should consider, yes, then I think we need to determine the... I think we should consider, yes, that I think we need to determine the amount of years we're going, we are going to allow.
If we come up with something that, that the max age would be somewhere between eight and ten, unless there was a failure. If there's a failure in the system, then they have to be required at that point to connect, rather than rehabilitate the system.
Absolutely.
So, those that are six years old now will get two to four years, whatever we decide would be the magic number. That's kind of what I was thinking last time.
Yep.
That if they, if they're three years old, they bought it three years ago, if we go to ten, then we give them seven years. If we go to eight, we give them five more years to get, at least get something back out of it. But again, if the system were to fail during that time, it would be time for them to connect.
Yeah, I think that would be an automatic provision. There would have to be. Because you're defeating the purpose of the policy by letting them reinvest in a, a system.
Exactly.
Well, would this be a burden administratively on you for trying to track who has what system, how old it is, and make the determination on it? I mean, it, it seems to me like it's cumbersome. And, uh, we've been, uh, working on this wastewater treatment plant for four years, or five years now, and somebody, you know, proven a businessman or owner should have known that it's coming and would have, could have made some other opportunities to, uh, to, uh, look at it in a different way instead of going with the full blown septic system. So, I'm, I'm really, I'm just not really seeing why we need to, uh, extend that kind of, uh, of, uh, support to individual people or individual owners. When really we're trying to apply it across the board, and we can't really start, you know, disfavoring somebody just because they have a new system. Is that supposed to be a question?
It's supposed to be. You, you made this question.
Okay.
Sounds like a question to me.
So, discuss and consider possible action regarding the proposed policy. Before we can discuss anymore, we've got the motion on the floor.
Make a motion that we allow a customer to keep a, an existing system until it's eighth year of existence, with the provision that if the system fails, that it must be replaced by connecting to the sewer. And then we also ask them to pay the seven hundred fifty reservation fee upfront.
And put that in, and put that in a draft in the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Now, discussion.
Let me add a reference to it. Say someone had no choice, right? Say they had no choice. They, they must replace their septic tank system somewhere. You guys have no choice. That's the only solution you've got. Now, say someone has that one. Would we consider an alternative or not?
Well, it's just like, uh, I understand Johnny's out there, you know, they pump monthly or weekly, and they're, you know, they have a big bill that comes just for pumping, and they're really just limping along knowing that the system is going to be coming and turned on immediately, and they're going to get the benefit out of it. So, uh, you know, I'm just, I'm just really not seeing where we just sort of cut and pick and, uh, and really process people that, for, you know, it's really showing favoritism to people that have new systems in, that really have an opportunity to know the, uh, the septic system and sewer systems are coming the way they are. So, I'm just not there.
Tony, is this going to be a case by case decision?
No, you're going to, if you set, if you set an eight, eight-year benchmark, we grade the benchmark. The question about the burden, it, it really isn't, it, it really isn't, it's y'all's decision. I mean, is it a burden? There are so few systems we're talking about in this situation. It's probably not a burden from that end of it. I, I, I think it really is a, a policy decision on your, on your part, uh, on how you want to handle these types of situations. Do you just want to require everyone to connect? Do you want to contemplate those who made, uh, a recent investment and then define recent? That's, that's, that's the tough question.
I think my intent was initial systems, not talking about rebuilt systems. I'm talking to someone who's put one in initially and got a permit to put an initial...
A brand-new system.
Brand-new system. We give them the eight years.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about referred.
Right. So, someone who's done a twelve or fifteen thousand dollar investment on a property that's within our original connection, we're just giving them the time to recoup some of that before we force them to pay impact fees and everything else that's going on with that, just to get some of their investment back in the system.
And it's not exempting them from paying impact fees in vain to the system.
Just, just to defer on to their system as eight years old.
Exactly right.
I may have missed this, Frank. Where does the eight years come from?
I'm, I'm just throwing a number at it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm speaking. It's, I'm thinking right now, most people that have the new systems, that's a new, it's a broken system. It has to be pumped regularly, so they have that, they have that expense. So, at some point in time, they're really going to want to get off that system, but at least to give them a chance to recoup some of that initial investment. I, is eight the magic number? Somebody come up with a better one. I'm just thinking that that's kind of a point in my mind that you might get a fair return out of it. And, uh, and then we get them on the system as well, and get them to be paying customer at that point.
Other discussion, please? Do I hear the call of question? Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise. Passes. Number C. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the appointment of members to the recently created minimum lot size task force. Don?
That's a mouthful. Uh, we, we workshop this particular item, as you know, at, at our last meeting, and, uh, the, the issue that we're talking about is, is very clear and simple, and that is, right now, we have a minimum lot size in our subdivision ordinance. That is, based on the concept that every lot in this town is to be served by septic, which means minimum lot size in effect is a half acre, because that's the state law for, for septic lots. Uh, obviously, with, with wastewater coming online and, and some of those areas, uh, that are proposing for, uh, subdivision development are within, uh, or in close proximity to the point that they can be served by wastewater, that changes the picture in the eyes of the developer. Uh, you heard that from the engineer tonight about what they were thinking about. Obviously, when you have central wastewater, you want to try to create more density, uh, and half acre is not the density sometimes a developer's life or a developer's vision. Uh, so, the question posed at the workshop was, we're probably at that point in this community where, where we really need to get together and, with wastewater now available, uh, have a very serious discussion at the table about what really the Salado want in the way of minimum lot sizes. Uh, and so, the thought was that we would appoint a task force, uh, five or seven-member task force that would sit down and chew on this issue over, over the course of a few weeks, and bring forth the recommendation to the PNC and to the board, uh, for potential modification of our subdivision code to recognize the availability of wastewater and the fact that there may be interest in, in reduction of lot size in some cases. Uh, so, it's before you tonight to appoint members to this task force. I think you got, you have three or four, actually, two, two probably key issues you need to think about, and that is, first and foremost, do you want it to be a five-member or seven-member? Uh, and then the next question is, based on your determination, composition and the appointment of the members. We talked, I think, at the last meeting about the idea of, of having, uh, you know, comp plan representatives on it, uh, having PNC representatives on it, having representatives of the board on that. Uh, and I think there was even a suggestion of having citizens on that, uh, that was brought to the table. So, it's before you tonight, and we asked you to bring names to the table tonight, and so, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Question we need to do is, any questions to Don, please?
So, we need to decide on the number of member, um...
First and foremost, the number of members.
And then who they are. Thanks.
Other questions, please? I'll take a motion, please, so we can get into the discussion of this. I'll entertain a, a motion, please?
Alright, do you want a motion with the size of the task force?
I would be glad to do it.
I move we name this task force with a member size of seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion now.
And, and they appoint their own chair. That they handle their internal operations themselves without direction from the board.
Mike, I'm totally agree with what you're saying. I think this, this committee, this last time we went through, I think we really need to hear from the citizens, and I think that's excellent, excellent. You'll shoot.
We're going to hear from the citizens. We want to hear from the citizens.
Absolutely.
And this is a good, uh, method to hear from the citizens. Question?
Do you want him?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, is this going to be a temporary, uh, committee of, like, two months, or is it a term committee, or...
It'd be, it'd be a task force. It would be a temporary committee, short-term.
And how are we going to select the members for this? Is this going to be...
That is your, that's your decision. It, it's, you need to talk about that tonight and decide how and who.
Okay, and, uh, and they're going to have to recognize that we've already passed a conceptual plan or concept plan for one that has a point two and a point two-one, so has acre lots, and they're going to have to grasp with that? Or, or is that, is that a precedent? We've already said that that's what they're going to deal with?
It, it, it's not a pres- it, it's every, every, every situation should be considered and evaluated on its own merits. Uh, so, from that standpoint, I think you certainly need to let them know that you approved the concept plan with, with those sizes, just like tonight, you approved one with half acre lot sizes. Just like the fact that you have subdivisions in this town that have lots that are less than a half acre that have existed with septic, for some reason, and how, who knows, for, for decades. Uh, so, but, but it's at a point, we're at a point with, with developers walking in our front door, that we need to literally develop some guidelines to the point that we maintain the image and character of this community. And, and we're at kind of a crossroads as far as dealing with that, uh, because you're beginning to see more and more people walk in the door wanting to develop.
Do you want names to be a part of this?
That would be preferred tonight, yeah.
Would you be willing to contact these people to see if they're interested, or would you want us to...
It's your choice, Mayor. I, I can do that if you'd like me to. If not, what you could do is say, "Let's bring, let's bring names in the next meeting." Tonight, we talked about how big the meeting is. Do you want to talk about the composition of the meeting? I think if you're going to exit and not do names tonight, you need to at least decide how you want that board to be made up. How many citizens you want, how many representatives of this group, this group, that group, whatever. That would be helpful. Because y'all are going to be having to bring names that fit into that category.
So, I'm not sure what would you like to do in a part of this, like, John, or your committee. How many citizens do you want? A representative from PNC, et cetera?
I'm going to say we just do seven at large, and I recommend that if, if we can, in the next day or so, send Don two names each. So, it'll be somebody that can't do it, but if we set, give, give Don two names in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours, we come up with, and if you get, do look at names from us, let us know, and we'll try to find somebody else. And I'd say totally at large, if you let it. I mean, if you think you, some particular person from the comp plan needs to be on there, that's fine. If you want a Realtor on there, that's fine. If you want a business person, that could be part of your thought process in which you want to put on the committee. But eventually, PNC's going to get it, and we're going to get it to look over it anyways. Whatever the, the committee recommends is going to go through PNC, and it's eventually going to come to us.
Is there, I think that's a, a suggestion. Okay, we've got this. Any other discussion? We're walking our way through this. Is that okay, Don?
You give me the direction, just make sure I've got it, and that is, seven members at large, no specific group representation. It's an at-large representation situation, and that you're going to provide me in the next two days, next three days, uh, two names each. And then we will bet those names, in other words, ask them if they're interested in serving on it, and then bring those names to you for appointment at your April fourth meeting. And the suit will be voted for the majority.
Mayor, we could, we could get their concurrence before we give the names to Don. Wouldn't it?
That'd be great.
I'd, I'd rather us get the person's concurrence.
That'd make a lot of sense.
I think it'd be much more fun to surprise them.
It would be more fun, it would be more fun, but...
Would, uh, based Thursday, could we all come up with two names by...
Why don't you do this? We, we produce the package for the next meeting, next Thursday, and so if you can give me names and make contact with the folks that you have an idea about, uh, and if there's duplication when I get those, I'll certainly notify everybody immediately so you can start rethinking other names. But, uh, give me the names, your two names, by each, your two names by next Thursday, say, and then, so we've got them to put on the package so you can act on them on April fourth.
That sounds good. Let's do it.
And if there's duplication, like I said, I, we can certainly let y'all know that.
We've got a motion overflow. We've got a second. Do I hear the call of question?
Call, go ahead.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise. D. Discuss and consider possible action approving a contract amendment with Casper Patrick and Associates for design services relating to the extension of wastewater service on Royal Street. Don?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor members of the board, this is a contract amendment with our wastewater design engineers. Uh, this is the next expansion that we're looking at, and this, of course, is the sixteen-hundred-foot line that will be going out Royal Street to the, uh, intersection of Royal and Smith Branch Road. It will be used to serve, uh, the new subdivision, but it'll also serve a couple of properties along the way, and, and we, of course, will, uh, go under agreement with those properties and bring the agreements with those properties to cover the cost of this added design, because they'll also be responsible for covering the cost of the construction, uh, as, as the city's not going to bear that cost. The cost of this contract amendment is ninety-eight hundred dollars against a sixteen-hundred-foot line, uh, and staff's recommendation is approval.
Questions, please, to Don?
Don, would you have any consideration whether this pipe is being resized for future development?
One of the things we're going to look at in the design process.
Don, is, uh, the property owners where this line is routed going to be routed, and is it on, all building's property, or how, how are we going to address that?
It'll be in the right of way, yes, sir. And actually, they will have to come into our right of way to meet us. We're not taking it to the front door of the subdivision. They're going to have to come across Royal Street.
Okay.
Other questions, please? I'll entertain a motion, please? I'll entertain a motion, please?
Move to approve the contract amendment with Casper Patrick and Associates for design services relating to the extension on Royal Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please?
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise. Passes. Don, uh, we're going to go into a workshop. Uh, it's very shortly.
You've got a couple of addendums.
I know, but I was going to say I'd like to move into the, is that all right?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. We're going to go, uh, we have two addendums, uh, and this is the addendum to the, the discussion and possible action, number E. Discuss and consider possible action establishing bank accounts relating to the operation of the new Salado wastewater system. Don?
Uh, yes, sir. In this, in this particular situation, uh, what we're asking you to consider is, uh, the creation of, uh... Mayor, you did call the bank account item?
Yes.
Good. Uh, this particular situation, uh, is, is a very straightforward item. We've got to, we need to create several bank accounts to handle some of the funds that will be coming in relating to the wastewater system specifically. What we're talking about is an account that we will hold the capital impact fees in. Those are not codeling funds. It cannot be mixed with the general fund. We also need to create a system revenue fund for the wastewater, uh, rates as, as, as they go into place and we start getting bills in. So, our staff recommendation is to allow us to create the bank accounts necessary with Horizon Bank, uh, to handle the funds generated through the wastewater system.
Questions, please? I'll entertain a motion, please?
I would gladly approve the addendum recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Do I hear the call for question? Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Opposed, likewise. Passes. Number L. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a post-agreement with Salado Water Supply Corporation relating to the vacant village of Salado wastewater... Number L, discuss and consider possible action regarding a post-agreement with Salado Water Supply Corporation relating to delinquent village of Salado wastewater system customer. Don?
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of the board. This is the item we briefly mentioned early on in our discussion in the rate ordinance. And that is, we have presented the Water Supply Corporation with a proposed agreement that would be between the village and the Water Supply Corporation. And the agreement would basically set up a procedure in which the Water Supply Corporation would terminate the water services for customers who are delinquent on their wastewater bills. That is the way it's normally done in most cities. It's a very common practice and procedure. And this city, we don't own the Water Supply Corporation. And as such, we need to propose an agreement with them to do so. We presented that agreement to, to the Water Supply Group, and they're gonna take it to their board. But I can tell you that the feeling of the administrator of the Water Supply Corporation at this stage of the game is that they don't see, he doesn't seem that that's gonna garner a lot of support when it comes to the board. I think the concern they've gotten, and it's, it's a good board, and they're very protective of their customer base, is they have concerns about people constantly making passes at them, asking them to do things. And in this situation, they come off as the bad guy because they cut the water service off. And we're very understanding of that. And the thing to understand, that the people need to understand, is disconnection is absolutely the last alternative on this village's mind. We're gonna try to work with customers to get the payments if we can. We felt like it was important to bring this, this agreement forward to them and let them look at it and see if they'd be willing to do it. So it is not, onto their board is supposed to go today, but they apparently did not have enough members for a board meeting. So they're gonna meet later in the month, next month. And so it's not a pressing issue for us at this point, because again, as we mentioned in the ordinance, we just adopt from the rates. We have other avenues towards dealing with customers who choose not to pay their bills. But we put this on there to get your views and get your thoughts. But I think until they act on it, it's probably, probably something we need to wait and let them see what they want to do.
Questions, to Don, please?
As I mentioned, there's a civil avenue that's, that's in the penalty clause of our rate ordinance we approved. It's gonna give us the ability to go to court if we have to. And there's very high likelihood if we go to court that you would get a court ruling that would say disconnect the water. So if we have to go that route, we have to go that route. That, again, is not our desire. And I don't think we're gonna have to do that.
Any questions, please?
So the most use solution on when people don't pay their water bill or don't pay their sewer bill is that their water is cut off. Does that correct that?
In most cities?
In most cities, absolutely.
And we, the kicker is this. How do you shut off an individual's wastewater service? If the source of the wastewater is the water, you normally cut off the flow of the water in this situation. We have the ability to go in and cap their clean outs if we need to do that. That's not a very effective approach. Normally, what you end up doing is you either cut the water off or you go to court and try to get the court to recover. And you hate to do that, because that's a cost that you have to incur to go to court. And obviously, if we don't have to go to court, the court starts getting in and trying to order the water company to turn the water off, and the Water Supply Corporation has to deal with that issue. I think we need to be sensitive to their feelings on this thing. I don't think we wanna burden them. I don't think we wanna make them the bad guy. And that's not our intent in this at all. Our intent is to try to do what a normal public utility would do in this situation. But we also need to be sensitive that they're our Water Supply Corporation, and that we don't want them to be bad guys.
We have no other solutions, right?
Our solution is court.
Court, okay.
Cut off the services we can, as best we can, and go to court.
Okay.
Don, would you be, would you be able to, one of us, myself or someone, attend that board meeting? Could we be invited to go there?
I can certainly ask him. I mean, I can certainly ask him. I guess I've been told that they were scheduled for later, later next month. So my suggestion is we don't get into a. My suggestion is we don't get into a conference.
No, we don't wanna get into a conference.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna postpone any action on the side. Until we get a formal answer back from the, from the Water Supply Corporation.
Discussion? Is there a call for the question? Question? Thank you. On favor, can you raise your hand, please? Opposed, likewise. Okay, we've been going at this now. It's eight twenty-five. We've been going at this for nearly two hours. I'd like to give them, give us a board, you, the opportunity to use the restaurants if necessary, or whatever, before we go into a workshop. Go after a chair and pull off for ten minutes, and we'll come back at twenty-five thirty-nine.
What I'm saying is that seventy-four, it was kinda like, seventy-four was in the P and C meeting you showed me. You're ready for the Mike's retake script in the front. So what they're gonna do is put the residential on the, sure, they're gonna have septic. Everyone, they're ready to build a commercial, they're gonna pull the septic sewer out.
Probably, okay. They just, I got a note from them tonight. They switched schools now. They're no longer, they're not gonna be associated, I think. But they used to be, so it'd be closer for us. It's just out in Berkeley. I'm gonna try, who knows?
You got a good battery tonight?
I have six supplies. And then they're gonna have two. Doctor, one of my keys.
And that's a battery.
And then maybe the brothers will come and. You think that's weird?
Can I listen to something about that scene?
So John Anderson, we lived in Williamsburg, like, again. We loved that house. Absolutely loved it. We've been to Williamsburg several times before, so it was very attractive when I went here to see that. Which is very.
Got enough juice? Yeah.
Oh, no, I was, we looked at transportation. That's what we're gonna flip, we're gonna change the per.
Kind of the venture.
Already, we had three jobs.
There were, well, no, Costa Rica. Some go meet, some go fly there, it's fairly secure.
Costa Rica's a US province, isn't it? Ninety thousand people.
I think, oh, yeah, I don't know that. Mexico.
Now, somebody, very in the know.
Minnesota?
What they're doing is.
Number A, discuss and consider issues relating to solid waste and recycling collection within the village of Salado. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the board.
This is the item we brought forward. I've talked to Mayor Barham a little bit about this too. He's got, he's got an interest in this idea of discussing it.
And that is this, the city right now, the way it handles that solid waste collection is pretty straightforward. And that is, we allow any garbage company to come in. They just simply, in effect, pay the city a franchise fee, and they can offer their services in the city. It's worked well up to this point. I mean, it offers competition, you know, and people have a choice when they spend. We're not saying what we're doing is wrong. I think that the idea that we put on the table is, you know, it's always good to evaluate those ideas and see how they're working. And see if there are unintended consequences. And I think when you think about the, the way it's going right now is if you have three different companies providing prices. That means you've got three different sets of trucks driving all over town. And they're not covering certain areas of town. One company, one certain area, one company, another certain area. They're going all over the place, chasing customers throughout the city, which means you've got three sets of trucks driving all over town. And that puts wear and tear on your streets. And I can tell you some of the recent work that was done. We feel comfortable, some of the issues we've had with some of the failure following last summer's work by the county. Was the result of some of that heavy truck traffic and the garbage truck traffic turning and bending and spinning. So we put the item on the agenda to get your thoughts on how you feel about it. If you were to go out and go out for bids and do a single vendor who would provide recycling and solid waste collection. You'd have one set of trucks going all over the city, and not the chase game that's going on right now. How does that impact the world of competition? Well, you address the world of competition through the bid process. And you make them go head to head at the table in the bid process. You have contracts with those vendors, which we don't really have right now, to speak of. And you have better, better control over what they do, what they damage, what services they provide, what incentives they provide. And also, you have, you have incentives on the franchise fee issue. We generate right now about eighteen thousand dollars a year in solid waste franchise fees from our three providers. We have, we get money from, from three, and my hunch is we probably have another random one or two that runs through that we chase down. But we just wanted to put it on the table and get your thoughts. We're not saying the system we have right now is broken at all. We're not saying we're trying to change the screen. What we're saying is there's some unintended consequences to what we have right now. And that's additional wear and tear on our streets. And it became very apparent after this, this last round of overlap on these trail. Some complaints we've gotten on that, we've looked into those, and we think a lot of that is a result of the heavy truck traffic that's been going up and down there from the garbage trucks. So we're asking you, what are your thoughts?
Discussion. What are your thoughts, gentlemen?
My thoughts are that we just should leave it like it is and keep collecting our fees from it and let the competition thrive. And if it's not broke, let's not fix it.
The reason why I put it on here is we've now gone from three trucks a week to six trucks a week coming through every neighborhood. Because, I mean, it's a great thing. We have the recycling. In fact, I put more recycling than I put garbage now. I wish the recycling truck came every week and the garbage truck came every two weeks. But it's, I just watch it. I mean, every morning, Monday morning, by my house comes four trucks. I don't see the third one. I don't guess they have the service in our neighborhood. But it, it's, it concerns me that we're allowing that much traffic to come through. And if there's a solution to reduce that traffic and help our roads, I think it's something that we need to discuss and look at.
The three, the three trash trucks who are costing people and.
There's no doubt about the damage that these trucks have caused the streets. And that's validated by our street committee. We've done three studies of the streets, and every time we see, so much of this damage is caused by the garbage trucks. And so that, that's fact. And the number of trucks is another question. Don't know if, don't know if one truck would produce. Don't know if, don't know if one truck would produce fewer trucks, fewer trucks than the three company, I don't know about that.
They may, they may assign, you know, another couple of trucks in the neighborhood, whatever, but I guarantee you, it's gonna be fewer trucks than what's on the streets right now.
It will be.
I feel very comfortable about that.
We have Eagle, and we've never had an issue with Eagle on anything, so the service that we've received, how you personally?
I don't think anybody's questioning service here.
Oh, well, no.
It's just a matter, are we allowing too much traffic on our roads, trying to keep up with that, and we have a limited road, as budget as it is, and then to see the damage that's been done, while we just fix. And so, I said, I just put it out there because I think it's something of concern, when we hear so many people complaining to us about the condition of our roads, that it's, that's one thing we could do to minimize future damage.
If we start going in there limiting access, because, you know, basically, it's probably a fifty fifty, uh, customers, basically, we use Closet, and have, have for twenty years and haven't had an issue with them. You know, we're, we're very loyal to them, and I would not want the city to come in and say, we have to use Eagle now, and I'm pretty sure the Eagle people would, I'd not like the city to come in and say they have to use Closet. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that, that us going in with one, with one vendor would really reduce the number of trips out there, I'm just, I'm just not seeing that.
Other discussion, please.
That bidding would produce savings to the village's citizens?
You know, until you do, until you do, you don't know, Michael, I mean, that's the purpose of it, is to get the best possible bid, and to get the best possible cost to the customer, and the best possible service level for the customer, with performance standards and things that we really don't have at this stage of the game. You could bid it, and see if it works, and see if the costs are right, and if they're not right, you can stick with what you've got right now, nothing says that when you bid it, you're abandoning the system, you're, you're simply testing the market. I don't know what you'd get in the bidding world, if I was being.
Only way to find out is to bid, right?
I know that I, I will tell you, when I first got here, I was, I had a long talk with one of the providers, and, and, you know, the discussion came up, and the question was asked, you know, give me, give me history, and I, and I got some history from him about it, and he didn't seem to fear the bid process. You know, he said, you know, it's wide open for us, and we don't have a problem with it, we like the way it's at, but he said, you know, we just want to continue to serve, so, I mean, they're all good providers, they're not bad providers, they're very good providers, in fact. You know, and we need to be proud of what we've got, but it does, it is, it's a worthwhile discussion point as far as the truck traffic.
And the fee is very fair.
Oh, they are, all of them are.
All of them are, yes.
I'm just not, I'm not getting the feeling that that's what the people of the village of Soleado want us up here tackling right now. With everything that we've got going on, if we want to go in to fix something that's not working, you know, great, but if we're gonna fix something that's working really well, for, you know, we've had zero complaints from anybody about our waste pickup and waste management, I don't know why we should go in here and try to fix that, with everything else that we have going on.
I know that, um, personally, I'm gonna have to, I need to process this, and to think through both sides of this, the points are well taken, both points are well taken. To do one side of this, I would like for, I should like for, I guess, um, for a hometown empty, to do that, and that would be, Closet is good, also. And I'm also thinking about Michael's idea of the possibility of just saying, well, bids wouldn't work, we want to do that. And I think that my cogn has got, this is, this is important, how we. I need to process that, but, you know, I don't think we're hurt to talk with each one of these three people, and to say, if we were to go this way, what would you give them?
Oh, we can't do that, that goes against the rules. But, you know. Don't get lost, and it's an easy, it's an easy slope to slide down on, and saying that we're complaining about the service from one contractor over another contractor, that's not the issue. The issue here is truck traffic volume on the streets, and the wear and tear on the streets, and, and the multiplication of trucks on the streets that could potentially be cut back with, with the sole contractor, that's the issue, it doesn't have a thing to do in, in any way. We're leaving, we're critical of services that's being offered right now. I think everybody at this table is in agreement, and I think most people in this town are totally in agreement that they're getting good service, service levels are good. From what I hear, I'm kinda like Mike, I'm not really a crit- critical of service.
The thing about, you know, if you want to fish for bids out there, you know, if the contractors know that we're not going to be sincere about awarding it, and that we're just fishing out there, then you're not gonna be getting their best foot forward. So if you're going to go out there and ask for bids and go through the contract process of it, you know, you have to know that it's going to be something that's going to happen, and then you'll get their best bids. So, you know, just fishing out there, I don't think is the way that we're gonna go, and, like I said.
It's the fall, it's the fallback, if, if the bids, you know, if, if it ends up that it's not beneficial from your analysis, it's the fallback, but I think your statement's right of the fact that you don't wanna go and say, let's just test the market, I think what you wanna say is, we're really interested in this, and then you make the analyzation as to whether it's worthwhile, I mean.
And that, as an alternative to that, could we charge like a, a more surcharge to fix the roads, if they want to be using our roads, like a road tax for them to get in, for the toll booth up?
One thirty-one as opposed to one thirty?
Now you're talking about raising fees.
Yeah, because that, that cost is gonna come out of the customer at that stage of the game, the same thing if you crank the franchise fee up, that, that's the other alternative, is to go in and try to address the franchise fee issue. You know, and, and, you know, and, and at the end of the day, you know where it's gonna come from.
It's just the vendor basically knows.
The other economic side to it is, if one company knows they have the market, they're able to provide it cheaper, because they're not hot scotting, hot scotting all over town trying to get it done, and you've got two companies that are sending trucks up here, gas and all that thing, if they know they're coming here and they've got the market, they can actually provide it cheaper.
If you have a monopoly on it, then you're not gonna try, so.
That's why you have, that's why you have a bid process, and you have a contract that has it.
If you're not gonna have a board, and you're not going to be going down the, the process of, it's gonna be a monopoly, and your vendor service is gonna go down, I have no doubt about that.
That's written into the contract.
I have no doubt about it.
What kind of research can we do on this, um, to be, to really, to really get our minds in the right direction, what kind of research can we do? We can't go out and buy the trucks, what kind of research?
We, we, we can, we can find out very easily what the trucks weigh, and know the wear and tear on the streets that comes from heavy truck traffic versus standard vehicle traffic. I mean, the, the research is, there's, it is whether you are interested in, in, in limiting yourself to one vendor to reduce the amount of truck traffic. There really is a preference issue.
Donald, would you know if we had been both of these vendors for the equal amount of time, like have they all, always been here, both vendors, or one of them just a recent vendor?
My hunch is one came before the other, my hunch is one came before the other, but you've got an open door, so, I mean, you could have six more come in here, and we wouldn't be able to stop, the way that, the way we're focused on that area.
Really? We could have more vendors come in if they wanted, if they wanted to?
The way you avoid that is you single source them.
I see, okay.
And I can tell you that, that if you do single source it, if that's your desire to single source it, you have to take a very serious look at the contract that you award in that situation, and make sure it's performance based, and make sure it is very, very clear what you're trying to accomplish through that, and that you have milestones that you can test it.
And we'll have to do new contract administration and quality control on our new contract, so we'll have to hire more staff?
No, that's not.
That's not true at all. Is three people?
No, three, five people, six people, no, we would not encourage that.
Donald, would our legal people step up?
It's your choice.
Our legal people?
It's your choice.
Well, I know that.
No, that's what they would tell you. Right now, you, right now, you allow multiples, and it's your choice to go the other way if you want to. And we're not saying you should or shouldn't, we're saying we brought the issue to the table just because there clearly is a truck traffic. Issue out there.
As validated by your street committees.
Yeah.
For the last three years, so there's no issue about, is it causing street problems, no issue, and they aren't, but do we want to give them some competition or not?
Well, I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like, that one side of the, one, one, the, one side of the argument is, are you reducing competition by going single source, and. It's how competitive you make the bid process, but I think Mike does raise a very valid point, and that is the fact that, if you're gonna go out to bids, you need to go out to bids with the understanding that if it works for you, you're ready to pull the trigger, and you're not just playing it. Because you do get your best bid if you know they're there. But you also recognize the fact that if they're not there, and it's not good for you, you have that callback to keep the door open, like you've got right now.
Well, we all know that bids are normally let when there is a problem, when there is an issue, and I don't, I don't think we have a service issue at all, neither do you guys. That, that's the question.
I think if, if you're gonna hold to, that our roads are being chewed up by the number of garbage trucks that come down through here, we're gonna have to back that up with a very straight. This is what we know as far as the damage that's been done, how much do you think it would cost over a year, I think we have to come up with some very good facts to prove why we want to do this. If we can do that, then I think, I mean, there's the possibility, but those facts have got to be very good. So, if we're, if we're willing to do the facts, if we're willing to do the research, if we're willing to do the work to find out exactly, is this really a problem or not a problem, we're not gonna know that until we have those facts.
Well, it is a problem, that's, that's a given, I think we all would agree that if you had six trucks grinding, turning, and twisting on a chip sealed roadway over a period of time versus two trucks. There is a difference, there's an obvious difference in the wear and tear, so the research is, is really not, I mean, we can look at it, but you're not gonna find a fail safe mechanism that says it causes this much, it does this much, it does this much, and here's the value of this much, it's supposition. But it's obvious that there is an impact on the streets that is created by the additional truck traffic. The challenge you run into is, there's other truck traffic other than garbage trucks, that you need to think about that wear and tear on the streets too. Your neighborhood, we've talked about, you know, some of the construction traffic, just as, as one example, you, you see your fair share of FedEx delivery trucks, and somehow, occasionally, a tour bus ends up going through the neighborhood, you know, and those type of things have, have an impact on it. It's, it really is a, I mean, it's. There's an obvious benefit, but it's whether you're wanting to, whether you think that benefit is great enough. To, to challenge the market, for lack of a better phrase.
So we have, um, the Austin newspaper here, the Ghaleen newspaper here, and the Tippel newspaper here, so we need to start our own newspaper contract too? Keep those people off the streets, just get one guy on a, on newspaper route, doing it, I'm being sarcastic.
I read my newspaper online. And I wish I had another Tippel provider in town too.
Well, I don't think, Donald, we can go any further with what we are talking about, I'm not saying throw it out, I'm just saying how, kind of, the discussion that we're having right now is.
Okay, give us more time to think about it, if you wanna bring it back up, we can bring it back up, we just felt it important to put it on the table for y'all to talk about, we're not married one way or the other.
I'll tell you, it's, Frank's position on this is extremely good, how do you run this bill to one point six million dollars, or whatever our budget is, it's almost impossible, and roads, we've got to do something with those.
Your roads are fixing, your road situation is fixing to get real.
Uh, it already is.
And we've got street assessment that, that shows that, so.
That's what the public's got to understand, John, that's what they've got to understand, this is just not something we can dream up.
It's not a matter of, it's not a matter of crack ceiling, it's not a matter of chip ceiling, you have some roads that are probably in need of reconstruction.
Yes.
Uh, and that is not cheap, Michael attested that, the committee's talked about that.
And we do need some that need to be reconstructed, because we just flat haven't had the money to do that, I know that seems like an excuse, but that is not an excuse. It's been a matter of money.
It's reality, man.
Reality, yeah.
To what, let's not just play, you got, you put it back on the next question, let's do that, and just let it, let us get our heads together on this, not make a crude decision without meaning like that, but let us have time to think about this.
And I think, just, just so, for public's clarification on this, this is not something we're advocating, and this is not something we're writing, it is something we're talking about, which we have an obligation, and we should be talking about issues like this. So, we're not saying, uh, anything other than, let's talk about the idea and see if we feel the problem is at the point where we need to look at making alternatives, so, it's wrong to say we're advocating and pushing something.
We're just doing what good boards do, that's all we're doing.
About the ideas.
This is, this is the kind of discussion that is very valuable to everyone on this. All right, let's put that on workshop for next one that we have, and just see where we are. Discuss and consider possible issues relating to development of a rebate program for initial customers on the new Soleado wastewater system.
I put this on here to let you know that we're gonna be bringing your proposal for consideration at the next meeting, we're at that point in construction where we're close to closing out the, the initial construction costs, and then we're gonna have an idea of what we might be able to offer, if that's your desire to do so, so it'll be on your February board, which I have. October, April, excuse me.
John, can you give us any other idea of what we're working on?
You'll see.
How can we discuss it, what can you?
We put it on there, we put it on there just to let you know where we're going.
John, do you have any questions you'd like to ask, John?
In concept, Mayor, to give you an idea, it's just clear and simple what we've been talking about for, for a while, and that is, it would be a, it would be a rebate program to the point where individuals would come in and they would certify they're connected, and once they're certified they're connected, we would issue a rebate check to those customers, and they could use that to offset some of their costs. The amount is what we'll see what that comes out of, we're waiting for a couple of figures, but the concept of program hasn't changed, we've talked about it.
And we're talking about everyone who's gonna fit up to this?
The initial customer base.
Initial customers.
Only the initial customers.
That's key, initial customers, right?
And it would be a uniform fee, it would not vary to. It would not vary depending on the type of customer. It would be a uniform across board fee that would apply to everybody.
So we've inserted a new certificate. And we're going to give them eight years.
They're not connected to the system.
That's right. So they're not going to get the rebate.
It's those who come in and certify they're connected within that ninety-day period.
Bring the board. What do you, what do you guys think?
I was going to say comparisons behind that.
We've talked about it, we've talked about that for a long time. It's not a new concept.
It's just we want to get to that point in the call.
Yeah.
I think to see the comparisons to where we do, we have that. Versus by that.
I think we need to tie it to an incentive program. Like you come in and pay the first thirty per days and then we do something like that to have you.
Good input.
Very done, very done. Number C, discuss and consider issues relating to the process used to appoint members to advisory boards of the villagers of Toledo.
We put this item on the agenda because you have three vacancies on the planning and zoning commission that are coming up. And actually, you have three that are real vacancies right now that need to be filled as it comes in. Uh, and so the thought process that, that we've talked about in, in past workshops on boards and committees is, how do you want to appoint those boards and committees in the future? And so we put this on here to let you talk about it. With these three appointments to a power board, which is the P and Z, uh, do you want to just have them make application and you simply review their applications here? Uh, one of the ideas that, that we've kicked around is, is do you want to maybe have those individuals go through a, a public interview process with the board? Where they come in and you, you give each candidate maybe ten minutes, so you often ask them questions about their thoughts and philosophies. The public can hear them, and, and then you, you choose after you conclude the interviews. Uh, I would recommend if you do that process, that you make that process a public process and not do that process behind closed doors. Uh, it needs to be public and vetted, but at least it gives you an idea of, of who you're dealing with and, and, and what their thoughts are, what their feelings are about certain issues as you appoint them to the board. Maybe give you a better feel. The other way to go about it is just exactly the way you've done it in the past, and that is anyone who submits an application, then you choose who to sit there.
John, what's your, what's your comments concerning that? I will say, for mine, I really like the idea of a public interview. That way we cannot, as all the men in the mayor cannot be accused of choosing our best friends or people that will vote like us for that position. And that's the only way I know how we can do that. It's not fun to be put in that position.
I was going to give you an idea of this, this is an option to those two that-
That I would have mentioned, now what can you say?
Uh, there are, I've been in some cities where the board members have each taken a seat, uh, or the, the council members have each taken a seat on that board, and it's their responsibility to bring a name forth for that particular seat. And the council ratifies the appointment of that individual. So, so Mayor Andy would bring somebody forward as his, as his person on that board. But that flies in the face of what you talked about. So that's, but that's another option, another way to look at it.
gentlemen, what do you think?
I think for our permanent boards, it's a good idea to have the interview process. You know, committees is another thing. That's a little less sensitive, but.
You're standing committees.
Standing committees and, and advisory boards that we have, those type of things. It'd be good to have an interview process just to let them, let us get to know them, them get to know us, and, and, you know, what are their views on it?
And would that be in public? Where they come in, just, you know, and we talk to them from the?
You put them at the table. I think what would happen is you wouldn't sit up here and they, and them down there. I think all of you would get around the table and sit and have a one-on-one with them, and the public could watch it. I don't think I'd make it more than ten minutes ahead. I mean, if this isn't some type of congressional testimony, but, you know, it gives you an opportunity to get to know the person you're, you're appointing. Uh, other than just what they say on paper, a lot of times people on paper don't demonstrate the personality you think they do.
That's very good. That's, that's a true statement. Okay, um, if it's okay with the gentleman here, I would like to recommend that we bring this forward and that it will be an interview. Do we want to take names, our names, if we put out, or do we want to run a little ad in the paper and say we're interested in doing this?
I think you issue a public call for, you put a public call for interest. And that can be in the paper, that can be online, that can be through listservs, it can be through Facebook, it can be in whatever way.
I like that because it keeps us very transparent.
It'll be an extra meeting for you if you get a bunch of applicants, but that's, it's worth it, believe me.
Well, you know, we are at a time in Toledo, we are at a time that we're at the park and road. And we've got to make good decisions for the future, and the citizens will help us do that. All right, Dean, discuss and consider issues relating to the villagers' Toledo Park land dedication ordinance for you development.
Uh, one of the things that has come up, and it came up at the comp plan discussion, and I think we referred that kind of to the workshops, uh, but I want to try to jumpstart this thing. Our parkland dedication ordinance needs maybe to be refreshed. And right now, it is, it offers payment in lieu of, and I'm not advocating, I'm not advocating giving away with the payment in lieu of. What I am advocating is making the dedication piece of the ordinance a little more practical, so it would discourage the payment in lieu of, and maybe encourage dedication in lieu of payment. Uh, right now, the way our parkland ordinance reads is it says that, uh, you know, you shall dedicate parkland, uh, but it says a minimum of five acres. And in, in some of these subdivisions, I'm going to give an example, bad or good, whatever you think that subdivision on Royal Street was, requiring that developer to give five acres of parkland in the middle of the subdivision is just not realistic. Uh, it is, uh, I mean, from a standpoint of, of what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to accomplish recreation space. We're trying to accomplish open space that people can go and enjoy. So we'd like to take a stab at, at bringing you guys some, some modifications on that. And, and it would, it would involve maybe looking at, uh, different stages of dedication depending on the size of the subdivisions. I mean, pocket parks seem to be a popular thing now. Trail systems seem to be a popular part. Linear parks as opposed to creating a zilker park, you know, in one of these subdivisions. Issue one. Uh, issue two is, is your fee dedication, uh, too reasonable? And right now, it's, it's basically two hundred dollars per living unit that they dedicate. And, and if you make that number too reasonable, then people are more apt to jump on that as an option. Uh, and so, you know, we, we, we think maybe taking a look at that fee is, is worthwhile as we look at the station and the size of parks and those type of things. And then probably the bigger issue, that I think, the biggest issue of, of the three, is the fact that right now that ordinance only allows you to address that parkland dedication within the limits of the village. And that doesn't allow you to attach it to the ETJ and the subdivisions in the ETJ. And you're going to be dealing with more in the ETJ than you're going to be dealing with in the village. And the thing to keep in mind is every subdivision you adopt in the ETJ has a burden on this village. Be it traffic, as we've talked about, be it parkland, they come and use space park, we are obligated to pay when they break the restrooms, those type of things. So it's important that we recognize the impact that that development has on this community. Yes, we get an economic benefit from it because they'll spend money in our restaurants, in our grocery stores, or in our, in our shops. You know, that, that benefit is there, but when it comes to city services, that's what I'm referencing from, from that end. Uh, so I, I want to get your thoughts on those three issues tonight, and, and then what I thought I'd do is go back and, and see what we can do about making some modifications and bring proposals. So the first one I would bring up would be park size and dedication. What, what are your thoughts on what should be a minimum? Do you like the staging idea depending on the size of the subdivision?
What is your, what are your thoughts?
Now, this is broke, and we need to fix it. And I like what you're saying about staging. If you have fifty acres, uh, you have to have, you know, five percent of that size be dedicated to park walking trails or whatever it is. And if you have a hundred, uh, ten percent, you know, you can have a sliding scale on that if you have a hundred acres. But, uh, and then, you know, for two hundred dollars per, uh, living unit, uh, for, to get out of the clause, I, I'm, I'm not for just taking that out and let's just make people put parks out there or some kind of walking trails or something in our, in our communities that we can all enjoy. But just get rid of the buyout. I don't think, you know, the money's coming to us and, you know, I don't think it's worth, uh, near what, what we're missing in the future of what we could have in Toledo. I'm on a roll tonight.
Well, the buy, the buyout is not sufficient for, for say us to build a park with that buyout.
No, the thing you've got to keep in mind is in a lot of these situations, and maybe not in all of them, but in a lot of these situations, and this may be something you need to contemplate too, and that is in that land that's dedicated, is it going to be for the subdivision only, or is it going to be for the public? And if it's for the public, then that means there's an added burden. There's an added maintenance and operations cost potentially in the village in those situations. Uh, and I'm not saying that's, that's a bad thing, but I think that's something we need to contemplate from that standpoint. You, you get, the, the parkland dedication funds that Grace pays me for her subdivision go into a separate fund. We've only had one subdivision that's done now. Uh, and that money goes into a separate fund, it's separately dedicated, and it's supposed to go towards addressing park needs in the community. Uh, maybe building new parks or enhancing existing parks to try to spice the impact of, of that subdivision, you know, from, from the subdivision onto, onto the park. So that's something to think through, but it is, I think it is broke. I think you're totally right.
I agree it's broken. I agree, I agree we need to do something with it. It's broken. Badly, sadly broken.
So we got the idea of staging or, or setting up in sequences?
Proportion.
Okay, so, so I'll look at that. And on the fee issue, do you want to, do you want to offer an alternative for a fee?
Something that's organic.
Sir?
Something that doesn't, that would not make them want to do it unless they just had to do it. They would not have the land to do it, or it would be, so.
Ten thousand per.
I don't know. I mean, you, you'd have to look at that. Where, where's that balance? I mean, is it five hundred? Is it six hundred? Is it seven fifty? I'm not sure. Sitting out to calculate and figure out what's happening.
I, I wonder if this is something that sort of goes hand in hand with the passwords we're making for the size of lots that we can?
I believe that. I, I wouldn't burden their, I think they need, that's a, that's a big issue to focus. You know, I think, I think what you do is you focus this, because P and Z, or the comp plans come in to you with a recommendation to basically take a look at that. So it, it's, so I mean, if you do, if you do, uh, so we'll look at, we'll look at the dollar amounts and see if I discourage that. And then are we all in favor that it should apply to the ETJ? General consensus there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Cool. Good input. Thank you very much.
Well, folks, we've had a long evening.
I'm with you, Jerry.
I think that's a good idea. Is there a second?
Third.
Third.
Thank y'all very much for your patience, man.
Shane, is that you guys? God, you talk to me first.